Good evening. I call to order this joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commissions. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's planning commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.org site for viewing by the general public. My name is Bonnie Duffy. I am the chairman for the Planning Commission for Minnehaha County, and Sean Irwin is here for the City Planning Commission. The two Planning Commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural areas surrounding the city. This area is displayed on the screen. After information and testimony is presented on an agenda item, the members will discuss the matter, and then each Planning Commission will vote independently to arrive at a decision. First on the agenda tonight is for public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider item number one, and that is the minutes from the October 22nd, 2018 meeting. Since this is the only item on the consent agenda, I entertain a motion.
Move approval of the minutes.
I'll second it.
Seconded, you approve the minutes of the October 22nd meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'd entertain a motion on the minutes for the city side. Moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries on the city side.
We will move on to the regular agenda. Scott, item number two, rezoning from A1 agricultural to a planned development district.
Scott Anderson, Planning Director for the county, and tonight is a public hearing on our rezoning request 1805. This is to rezone approximately 30 acres from the A1 agriculture district to the proposed Laurel Ridge Plan Development District. The property is generally located at 47677 Slip Up Creek Road, which is approximately one mile north of Sioux Falls on Slip Up Creek Road. What we have here is, and I'll go through the slides sort of as I'm giving the presentation, that will help better clarify what's going on, but the applicant has a 30 acre, 30.5 acre parcel, and he's proposing three sub-areas as part of a plan development request. And I've, in the staff report, listed those out for you, SubArea A, B, and C. And this is the parcel that you can see, and these are generally the sub-areas. So let's refer to this map as I go through the sub-areas. SubArea A is proposed to be a commercial area, and that is shown in the blue. And the request for that is to be used for a reception hall event center and would be the site of, for parking or for events, hosting gatherings, corporate and private meetings and weddings. There will be parking on this property and landscaping, and this area composes approximately, I think, four acres, thereabouts. There would be a private access drive that would, private driveway that would come off Slip Up Creek Road, go directly south to the proposed site. The larger area of the parcel, which is shown in pink, of the planned development, which is SubArea B, is proposed to remain ag. Currently, the applicant is using this for horse pasture, and you'll see some pictures of some horses there. I think that it is the location, the primary location of Slip Up Creek, and there is quite a bit of floodplain in that area, so it is basically going to be open space. The green area, which is the last sub-area to be proposed, is SubArea C, which is requested to be a residential component of the planned development. And the applicant is requesting to rezone approximately seven to eight acres, and there would be seven proposed residential home sites within that area, within that sub-area. As I indicated, Andy's Acres is located approximately a quarter, extends from a quarter to a half mile to the west up off of Slip Up Creek Road, and you can see that to the west northwest on the other side of Slip Up Creek Road. And the city of Sioux Falls has indicated that this area eventually will be used or is proposed to be called out for residential growth. And the city of Sioux Falls Planning Department has reviewed the request, the planned development request, and they had some comments, and those comments have been included in your packet for your review. A lot of what the city talked about really pertains more to what we would consider the final development plan, specific details. What is important to note, however, is that the city planning department did not support the residential component of the planned development, which would be the SubArea C. And once again, we sort of look at these, we look at planned developments as a very good way of monitoring and regulating the use that occurs on these properties, because we can incorporate or require very specific elements, landscaping and parking, and the exact, specific use that will occur on that property. So in that regard, planned developments work very well in blending things into the community, whereas if you just had a commercially zoned property, you could have a whole host of uses and conditional uses. A planned development can specify the exact uses that will occur there. So in that regard, it works well for us to accommodate that kind of use. And as we are sort of seeing, there is a demand and a strong interest in wedding barns/events facilities for hosting parties, receptions, gatherings, corporate events, whatever. So coming down to what our recommendation is, staff, county staff also does not support the request to rezone the SubArea C to residential growth. You may recall, and this is an item that was about a year and a half ago. We had a rezoning request at 47653 258th Street. Corey Riker, you may recall, he wanted to rezone 20 acres. He had a 20 acre parcel of land. He wanted to rezone three and a half acres to allow for one house to be built there, and we did not support that request. And ultimately, the county commission also denied the request to rezone that to residential use to allow for one additional house. So in the vein of being consistent and following our density zoning, what the applicant has proposed does not really fit well into what would classify, what we classified as our density zoning of residential development. So I have two ordinances, and I'll hand those out to you. I apologize. I thought that they were in the packet, but they were left out. But I have prepared two ordinances, one for your consideration tonight. One is, contains for SubArea A and B, which is the commercial events facility, the events hall in the ag area, and then one which contains all three sub-areas and provides all of the documentation of what is the criteria. So... Let me go through the slides then quickly, and I'll show you the...
Thank you.
This is the general area. This is on the approach, looking on Slip Up Creek as it turns and goes north. This is looking back to the west from the approach, from the corner of the property, looking back towards Andy's Acres. This is the property. This is, I'm standing basically at the township road and looking straight south. The events facility would be over on the south side of this road. This is looking sort of across the property to the southeast. This is down quite a ways into the property, looking back up to the north. That's on Slip Up Creek Road. This just shows you some of the wooded area. This is the ag area. You can see the horses that are being maintained on the site. When I was there, they were actually working with some of the horses, and there was a horse trailer, some people there riding them. And then back, so the residential development would be located on the east side of the property. And I'll go back to the designation or this map. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Staff's recommending, both our city and county staff are recommending approval of the development of SubArea A and B and not of SubArea C, the residential portion. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Scott?
Yeah.
Does the owner, the boxer at the top, does he live there or anything?
There's an existing, there's an existing platted lot there with an eligibility, and I believe that is, does, you don't own that, right?
Yep.
Yeah, they own, it's part of the owner, the applicant owns that property, but it's not included as part of the planned development.
Yeah, Scott, is rural water accessible in that area?
Yes.
Okay. How about sewer?
No. Only Minnehaha Community Water is available. Sanitary sewer would be provided by the city of Sioux Falls, and that is quite a ways out. And that would, I'm not sure of the exact date, 2030, 2040, in that range?
Any other questions for Scott?
Questions from the city side?
Scott, just to clarify, the SubArea 3 on your map here, SubArea A on the right up, SubArea 2 is SubArea B, SubArea 1 is SubArea C?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the city side?
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Is a petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address, please?
Hello, I'm Tyler Childress. Address in Sioux Falls right now, 2108 South Tamarack Drive, Sioux Falls, Oklahoma, 57103. Appreciate your time here. Couple things I guess want to kind of go over if that's okay with you guys there. This has been a year and a half project for me and my wife and my family, so thank you for all the opportunity of speaking here. Phase 1, it's a beautiful event barn that's located just one mile north of Sioux Falls. The location of the venue and the proposed structure would be, create a harmonious and compatible use to the agriculture. There is increased demand at the type of event facility, as you've obviously seen other applications throughout the area here as well. Laurel Ridge Event Barn, it will definitely fit and be beautiful among that as well, among the running horses, among the herding cows. The beautiful white three-panel horse fence will serve guests with amazing photo and event possibilities. The winding creek that flows in the middle of the property would be a beautiful landscape for those who attend. Sioux Falls has really not discovered the northeast portion of the city, I would say. It's just underutilized with rolling hills and the new Veteran Hills Cemetery that's going up there, and with the water flowing in the creeks, one must truly see the land to understand the beauty. Without specific plans for tier-three growth between 2030 and 2040, I hope you can be flexible for the planned development that will allow part of the use to be an event facility. We see this as a multi-use event center for weddings, for corporate events, for veteran celebrations, and more. We have taken into consideration future use changes in phase 1. And when I say phase 1, what I'm kind of talking about is the commercial proponent of this, and I see phase 2, essentially, both came as agenda items, but phase 2, I see that more as a long-term plan, long-term goal for the project, if that makes sense. I hope you see the synergy between the Senate Bill 91 that approved and plotted the Veteran Hills Cemetery on the same road. And we don't really have a best map here, but if you look on 477th as it kind of goes north, you see a property line in white there. What that is, is that's the pre-plotted plan for the cemetery that's heading in that direction. I hope you can see how much effort and time has gone into this planned development to make sure we bring something new and innovative to Sioux Falls. I'd love to answer any questions you have.
So whereabouts, Tyler, whereabouts is the cemetery? It's just north out of sight of this picture, is that?
If you look on the picture itself, you see how it says 477th right on the top as the road kind of turns north there?
Yeah.
Maybe, there we go, I can use this too. It's right here, if you look on this here.
So it's on the west side of that road?
Correct, yep. And there's a 60-acre, a two-phase kind of plan to have that. It's already been pre-plotted out and designated with the name of Veteran Hills, so the event center would complement that. When they have those cemeteries, they don't have any, there's no food and there's no drinks allowed on property, so we'd complement that as well, if that makes sense.
And thank you. One of the other concerns, I guess, that was expressed was that you would not be able to put signage out there on the road since that's going to be an ag thing. Have you thought about doing a flagpole?
We looked into that option, but we have found the ag option because of the access needed, if that makes sense, from SubArea 2 to get up through there as well. So our goal would be to have a sign that kind of falls into an archway, kind of think of like a ranch-type style, where it has a nice fence and has a ranch around it, and you enter gates per se, because there's going to be a farm or ranch in there as well, if that makes sense. And it's Laurel Ridge Farms and Laurel Ridge Event Barn, so the names are very similar. But in our proposal, we have it where we're allowed a sign in the ag section, ag division.
I guess finally, the access to the east area there, especially if there's flooding, you know, is that going to be assured during, you know, in the future?
We have kind of the timeline, and I've got Eros data as well as images and such. But what it shows is the history from 1950 on. The bridge there was being built in 1991, and it sustained 20, 25 years, 27 years now of use without any issues. There used to be a bridge, 1950s, that got worn out to a small wooden bridge, and then the farms, they went away. So since the new bridge is construction, there's been no issues over there.
Thanks.
Any other questions? City side?
Other questions from the city side?
Thank you. We may ask you to come back if there's some questions.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this item? Is there anyone here that would... State your name and address, please.
Ryan Beckel, 47614 Slip Up Creek Road, just about a quarter mile. There's eight families that I'm sitting with back here. I got elected, I guess. A couple of concerns, questions I have. Septic tank for the event center. What's that going to do? Where's the runoff with the floodplain right there, Slip Up Creek right there? What other, my concerns are, what are they going to do with the septic tank? Since there is no city sewer out there right now. Increased traffic on the gravel road. In the one picture that was shown, the pavement stops that homeowners are all paid for, not paid with any city funds or county funds. It was all homeowners paid for all that area. Are they going to pave the rest of that? I don't know. Increased traffic is my big concern, or one of the concerns with little kids and everything else out there. Outside bands. How late will they be allowed to go? How loud is it going to be? Right now, we have saddleback or whatever it's called now, the motorcycle course. You can hear that running at all hours of the night. What is, is there going to be a limit on to bands outside? Inside, how loud is the music going to be? The sign restriction, it talks about it in there, but I'm not sure what kind of sign it is. We don't want to, we've lived out there for a while. I don't want a huge sign. We brought up the bridge right now. A private person built that bridge going over the Slip Up Creek. It's survived, but the bridge on 477th, so just going north of there, that the county built, that got washed out a couple of years ago. So yes, a private bridge survived a flood. The county bridge that was built was washed out and had to be repaired shortly after it was built the first time. What size occupancy is this commercial event going to hold? Right now, I know there's the one down by the apple orchard. It's not just a weekend thing. It's Monday through Monday. There's always something going on. It's louder. Why are we letting a commercial one in? If we won't let houses be built, why would we let a commercial industry in? What are the, right now, it's all residential or ag. Is there a chance, are we setting a precedence where someone else could come in and build something else? Another event center or something else, commercial-wise? Wine and beer license. The elevation change, I'm not sure what it is. It was brought up, that the ag area floods. There's not much of an elevation change. How much is the elevation change, and what are the rules on that? Is the commercial area in it? The area that's left out of the map right now, that's way up on top of the hill, and then you go down a hill to the rest of the area. I grew up out there, playing out there. I know it's, there's not much of a change in those areas. So those are some of my concerns. I'm not sure if I left anything else. Someone else might have something else, but thank you for listening.
Hold on just a sec.
Hang on.
Sorry.
So where do you live relative to this? Do you live on the north-south road?
If you look, where it's a little, right there, where the little red dot is right now. That's my house.
And...
And then the gravel or pavement stops right about here.
Right.
And this whole area here is where the veteran cemetery will be. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Questions from the city side?
I got a question. All the homeowners out there, you all have your own septic tanks, right?
Yes.
Okay. Have you had any problems with that out there?
I live on top of the hill, and I live on Pierce Sands, so no.
How about the others that are downhill from you? Have they had any problems with your sewer?
No.
Okay.
The only one that might have issues is, would be the house right about there. They're down low, their septic, their, some pump is always running, pumping water out, so they are in a lower area, and it's probably a little bit higher up than where the commercial property will be sitting.
And the proposed wedding building, commercial building, that's all downhill from where you're at, right?
Yes.
I'll answer a couple of his questions for you.
Go ahead.
This, I can stand here, it's fine. So just to clarify, he has a question about the septic tanks, because this is a commercial activity. The septic tank design is sent to peer, to D E and R, and it has to be reviewed and approved. And they typically submit engineered plans to, for those, if it's a commercial use, to peer for approval. And to talk a little bit, you had questions about the signage. So if you go to the proposed ordinance that I gave you, and this will also help answer Jeff's question too. Under SubArea B, item number four, it says sign regulations. There has been a provision made for, because I had talked to Tyler and we had talked about the, he would like to have sort of like a ranch-looking sign above the entryway into the property, and that would actually be in the ag sub-area. So if you look in the ag sub-area, which is SubArea B, under four, it does allow for him to have a 200 square foot sign, which would be able to put anywhere on that ag property, but it would probably be, the driveway comes down here, and I think he would like to have some kind of signage up towards the front here. So I've made a provision here for 200 square feet, which is a typical, the size that we allow commercial businesses, which, you know, a 10 by 20 basically sign, or 200 square feet. So, oh, and I do, I can show you the floodplain map. If you want me to put it up on the Elmo, I can show you the colored floodplain map here, and...
Sure. So while he's getting that going, I'm going to address some of the concerns, if that's okay?
Okay.
A couple of questions they had about the increased traffic right in that same road. Obviously, we do have saddleback or Sioux Valley Cycle Club that drives and multiple cars go past there daily. They haul trailers and that kind of stuff in there, and it's pretty heavily trafficked in the weekends. The veteran cemetery is a Monday through Friday business. It'll have around 270 funerals per year, what they're estimating. So that'll obviously bring a lot more traffic to that road as well. So we don't see my use to be anymore or adding this small percent to that. It's not going to be heavy use, if that makes sense. As far as the sound, we would match whatever the county ordinances are as far as sound goes. Most times, they have like an outside ordinance that you can only play music outside till, you know, nine o'clock, and after that, have you all inside. Our plan is to put insulation inside of all the walls to make sure it's well insulated and the sound barriers there as well. The sign we've covered. The occupancy, we estimate between 250 and 400 would be the occupancy. There is a loft section inside there, so if you add the loft inside there. As far as wine and beer license, the goal is to get a wine beer license, not a liquor license, to serve that. Our goal is to use some of the local partners, like, you know, Furnesson and other type people to attract that as well, so the local as well. And the elevation change, and maybe that we discuss here with Scott too, but I'm going to kind of point to it here. Oh, I see. I see. So in the...
Put your finger on it, or you could, we'll see.
Or I can do colors too, if color helps. So if there's color coordinating, so this is the current floodplain that there is today, right there, sorry. That's the current floodplain. So the proposed building is outside of here, actually outside of the floodplain. There's a new proposed floodplain that comes in this new red area, and we're actually due to city recommendations and smart by them to have us outside of this red area. So the event barn will be located somewhere in this section here, which actually, this hill, there was probably, oh, a day and a half of truck work that brought dirt from this top hill, brought that down to here. So this area is much higher than it used to be. So from here, down the creek, there's probably a good 60-foot decrease in the elevation. But yeah, our plan is to be in somewhere in this section here, and it has the road kind of going up here. And I've got some proposed building images, if you want to see that as well. But that kind of helps explain where the floodplain is today, where the floodplain is going to be, and that we're outside both of those, if that makes sense.
I have a question while you're up.
Yep.
I think the question was raised about, do you have a timeframe about you going to be having events every day? Are you, what, is it going to be from what time period to what time period, or?
Yeah, the goal is to, the primary business in any of these event barns is the wedding business, which would be Fridays and Saturdays. That's the primary business. When I bought the property, that was my goal. The veteran cemetery came after that. That could be an ancillary business, Monday through Friday, but I'm unaware for sure if that'll work or not, to be honest. So the primary business is Fridays and Saturdays for weddings, and that's mostly between, you know, May and September, during the fall month or during the late fall, the winter, there's not a lot happening at these places. And his concern was that it turns into Monday through Monday kind of thing in Harrisburg. They have a Wednesday night event once a week, and they have a Friday and a Saturday event most throughout the year. The Wednesday is not very well traveled, but the Friday, Saturday are the events.
Thank you.
Yep.
And just, so the audience understands the process. Um, tonight, we're just talking about the, the uses, that's what we're discussing. And then what is required, should this be approved tonight, before the applicant can move ahead, they have to submit a final development plan. And that final development plan is when we really get down to the brass tacks of the hours of operation, and whether we will allow a liquor license, and the number of parking spaces, and the landscaping, and the, and all of the very minute details will be hammered out at, in that final development plan. So, and as Tyler indicated, um, just a little bit of explanation. As he indicated, the current hundred-year floodplain is shown in the light blue gray. The state of South Dakota is in the process of re-evaluating and re-engineering, re-studying the entire floodplain of the, uh, East River. Basically, the entire Big Sioux River Basin is being reevaluated. And based on the preliminary information that they've already gathered, they know that a lot of these floodplanes are going to change, and they've some, provided this, uh, us with the, what, what is anticipated to be the new floodplain. And that is shown in that red, so it is significantly enlarged. And so, we wanted to make sure that he knew that for any planning. And you can also see it, what I, what I would like to point out is, you know, this, this area over here is where his proposed residential development is going to be. And yes, while there is area that is out of the floodplain, a lot of that is, uh, is used up in the floodplain. So there would be somewhat limited areas where you could build a house. And, um, you, the state of South Dakota typically does not allow septic tanks and drainfields to be located within the hundred-year floodplain, so there'd be another hurdle. Is, is it doable? Yes, you could put houses there, but you're really limiting the area, um, because of what will eventually in the next three or five years be the new hundred-year floodplain. And that's not just, and, and I think that we need to remember, there are hundred-years event, and there's more than a hundred-year events. And what might have washed out that bridge could have been more than a hundred-year event. So we also need to keep that all in mind too, so.
Okay.
So, when we look at the expanded floodplain, and even how it encroaches on the proposed commercial property, uh, would you foresee that there's adequate space there for septic system more to the west?
Yeah, there, there's adequate space. So that parcel's about four acres, and it appears to be about one acre that is going to be in the floodplain. And, um, the applicant, there, there is a mechanism, um, by which FEMA does allow you to remove things out of the floodplain. You have to do engineering work, and you can do what's called a le- um, letter of map amendment based on fill. So you can go in and you can fill certain areas, you have to get that pre-engineered and approved before you bring in the dirt and fill it. But you are allowed to do some limited fill within the floodplain, which then potentially could take out. Then you have to resubmit the documents, and they revise the maps, and it, it is a long process, and it is expensive as well, so. But there are, there is mechanism there to move floodplanes around a little bit.
Thank you.
And with the revised floodplain, we have come to a slightly different plan per se with the commercial section here. It's kinda hard to see, and I can try to draw it up later, but we've, four acres was the large portion of it. But the, um, requirements, um, of the building, it's gonna be a fifty by one-twenty building size, and about twenty-four is the minimum size for spaces. So we really only need point six-five of an acre. So we're, the plan is to slightly modify, get it out of the floodplain because of the new hundred-years, and put the commercial section down to one to two acres. That way, we're all outside that floodplain, and that way, we're modifying the plan to get that point. And I've got some diagrams and stuff here too, to kinda explain. Just kinda explain maybe a little better here. Essentially, you've, yeah. What that does to that particular area is get all of that lot outside of that floodplain, and also quite a bit actually removed from there. Cause the minimum requirement's about point six-five, when we worked with Sayre Associates, point six-five is the minimum size that you can be. Obviously, you can go up from there. But to meet the capacity load, um, that would be twenty-four spaces, and essentially with a fifty by one-twenty building. So that helps kinda modify that plan to get that more out of there, if that makes sense, to meet the requirements beyond the floodplain.
Madam Chair, we need to get Ryan back up there. The fellow that was, uh, we kinda let, uh, the proponent, uh...
Yes, sir.
Come back, and, yeah, we need to get the other side again. Um, I guess, Ryan, did, did any of this help alleviate your, any of your concerns?
Well, I understand it all from my engineering background, but it doesn't make it any less of a nuisance to be having a commercial resident out there. When we have houses out there, we live out in the country for a reason, to get away from all of it. Now we're bringing it into our neighborhoods.
Any other questions?
I have one now.
Peggy?
Um, I just need a little clarification on where the paved road ends, before the curve happens. And then I have a question for Scott, if I could.
Okay, sure.
That's not gonna show, it's right basically where the paper ends. So it's almost, if I could get a Google map or something, it's almost right where that paper ends on that, so I go into the wa- uh, west.
We can probably see on our maps that we have here. Thank you.
Okay.
Switch over.
Can you zoom in on it? Yeah. We're base, almost where that R ends, or the D is, is right, we're about where the, the gravel starts and the...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chair, well, I have a question for Scott.
Hi. Sorry, kinda lost my voice. Nate Althoff, I live at four seven six oh five Sorrel Street. Um, I think the point brought up about the cemetery is actually against it, because we are gonna be seeing increased traffic there already. And now, kinda bringing this in is gonna increase it even more. Um, but my concern is, will this increase the likelihood of more commercial, um, properties being allowed in the area? Or is this gonna like, if this one gets approved, like, that's it? Because my concern is this is gonna set a precedence, and other commercial properties are gonna try to come in.
Thank you. Sure, come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Sonia Wilson. I live at four seven six four four Slip Up Creek Road. I am right before the, um, the gravel. And what I am concerned with, as it stands, I have to hesitate before making a left turn into my driveway. We have a lot of increased traffic on the weekends, and so, all of us hesitate, and then we make a left turn into our driveway. And I understand the anticipation of the, the veterans cemetery, that they expect two hundred and seventy people a year, or, or two hundred and seventy funerals a year. But the traffic going to and from a funeral is vastly different from the traffic that I will expect at an event center. And I have children and grandchildren, and I am deeply concerned. And just because of the whole nature, and I love event centers, but not so close to my home.
Thank you, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak?
Nate, again, just to bring that up, there is kind of a big hill right there that is completely blind going over the top, go traveling east to west. You, like, walking on that road, uh, you gotta have your head on you, be looking quite, quite well.
Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Jerry Foster, and, uh, I've lived on four seventy-seventh for forty-seven years. I live right across from the motorcycle track on a farm, I have a hundred and sixty acres there. And my biggest negative feeling about this banquet facility is, uh, four seventy-seventh is a dangerous road. It's winding, and the map doesn't show it, but it's very hilly. And it's very narrow gravel road, all the way up to that housing district of Andy's Acres. And, uh, as Mr. Childress said, their, their biggest time of, uh, banquets or parties, weddings, um, is on Friday and Saturday night. And the motorcyclists also have their biggest event is on Saturday night too. So when you get that conflict, confluence of two different parties coming in there with lots of cars, and there'd be a lot of drinking at the facility, the banquet facility. And they, uh, the motorcyclists go to midnight too, so. There's no streetlights or anything on that road, it's a dangerous road. And, uh, I just wanted to point that out. And, uh, plus a lot of it, that road gets in the floodplain down towards the, uh, the curving of, uh, four seventy-seventh, when it becomes Slip Up Creek Road. The north-south piece is four seventy-seventh, the east-west piece is Slip Up Creek Road. And this, uh, event center is right at the intersection of those two, pretty much so. And, um, I've seen that, it was two years ago, that bridge was washed out. It's right there, a couple, three hundred feet north of where their facility is gonna be on four seventy-seventh. And it was, uh, we couldn't use the road for three to four months. It was, the whole embankment was all washed out on, um, both sides of the, or L C, on the south side of the creek. That's the end of my story.
Mr. Foster, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Having lived there, uh, so is this a township road?
Yes.
And they main, the township maintains it?
Yes.
Uh, do you know if there's any plan to extend the asphalt or the pavement?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay.
No. The...
Township guys here.
The motorcycle people, and I think one new resident on there, uh, have paid for putting oil on just the portions by their property in the last two years. But that's the closest it's come to hard surface.
Madam Chair, township, uh, person is president.
I understand he's here.
One thing about the road there and that kinda stuff. So when, in the joint section of the city and county, what happens is, there are fees that get a portion to me, or my business, when I rezone that. So there's a portion estimating around twenty-six thousand dollars an acre. What that then does is go into a, a city's general fund. And then when, and if the city decides to grow and get out there, they'll, they'll be able to use a portion, or some of my money that I'll be paying to rezone that. So it's been talked about, um, of being paved, but nothing has been official. Um, but just to understand, the, you know, the residents mentioned how they paid and, um, paid for themselves to get that paved. Um, I'm also, will be paying fees that then go towards that road, if that makes sense, at some point. So when that does get up and going, some of my, the fees that I pay go towards that as well. That way, we all pay our fair share, per se.
Township, would you come forward, please?
Good evening. Um, my name is Don Oshlager, I'm a Mapleton Township Supervisor. Mr. Childress, uh, called us and asked for a driveway permit, which is required in our township. And we gave him a driveway permit for the new driveway, knowing what his proposal is. The residents are here, are absolutely correct that they paid for the asphalt that's on Slip Up Creek Road. The other part of that, there's many unknowns with the veterans cemetery coming. I have sent numerous photos to the state of South Dakota from the flood of twenty fourteen. Uh, as Mr. Foster said, the bridge was unpassable for three months. Um, there's a lot of engineering going into that, there's a lot of unknowns. The way to get to this is going to be Cliff Avenue to Seventy-second, to Jim's Weep Highway to Slip Up Creek Road. There is no access to this area off of I ninety. So these are concerns that we've also been working with, the state of South Dakota, stockwell engineering. Nobody knows what's going to happen to the road. We made it clear as a township that we do not have the funding to blacktop the road, or do much more than what we're able to do now. Uh, we asked Mr. Childress to do the same thing that everyone else would do, such as Strawbill Winery, Saddleback Race Track, uh, the Cricks Gun Club. If that remains gravel, and the only way that would get changed, if the county would take it, the state would take it, or private would take it, we would ask that that to be magwatered, uh, to control the dust. And I don't think anybody wants to go to an event center on a gravel road. I know it's a concern for the cemetery as well. So there's a lot of unknowns with that road. Um, I think the primary in and out, obviously, is going to be Slip Up Creek Road. I don't know that there'll be a lot of traffic north-south there, uh, but there could be.
Any questions?
Jeff?
Don, I didn't see you hiding behind the pillar, but, uh, so what about the, the hilliness of this, the existing road? Is it a hazard?
Um, it is, it is, but it's a thirty-five mile an hour road, I believe, and, uh, with that in consideration.
Ma'am, you'll have to wait until he's done, and then you can come forward, okay?
Um... You know, as we all know, uh, speed limit signs are suggestions. And, um, the speed limit sign is there for safety. And I would, uh, we're constantly encouraging Maha County Sheriff to patrol our township roads, but they don't have enough manpower to be out there all the time. What we find is most often, the accidents on these township roads are, are caused and created from excessive speed. So that speed limit is posted on that road accordingly. Um, you know, if there's, there's things that happen, um, related to snow, um, rain, you have it, uh, you ma- you know, there's all kinds of things that create accidents. But I believe that the speed limit is posted accurately and correctly for that section of the road.
Any other questions for him?
Questions on the city side? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak of this item?
Hi, Jamie Azure, um, two five nine six eight, four hundred and seventy-sixth Avenue. So as you look at that map there, and you turn on to Slip Up Creek Road, there's a small house on the corner. There's another house right next to that, and that's mine. Um, the reason that's important is, and I'm meeting some of the neighbors I've met before, which is fantastic, we'll have a party after this. Um, you know, I, when you're doing something like this, it's always tough, and I get it. And I'm not here to blackball his idea or anything like that, but I do have concerns. And, and here's where they're gonna start. So what we're talking about now is zoning, correct? And then you're gonna talk about what you're gonna do inside the zoning, once he gets zoned, is that what I'm understanding? Okay, so that's dangerous. I, I think that's dangerous. And the reason I feel that's dangerous is, is the big concern is not what this gentleman plans on doing. I'm sure it's gonna be a great facility. I have no doubt in my mind, I can tell by the way he talks and his passion. It's gonna be a great facility. Um, what about the next guy? How are you gonna tell him no? And so, as where I sit right now, we talk about the dangers, and, and I know, to speak up like that, I get it, because it's pretty passionate for you, I understand what happened there. I do it for a living, you know, you guys all know that, and I've worked really hard, just as hard as this guy's working here to get his thing going. My kids play out there on four seven six. My speed limit's thirty-five miles an hour, and that's just with the traffic we have now. That's with all, all, all this extra things that are coming. They put the, the speed sign out there, thirty-five, you know, the, the, the speed thing, so people can see how fast they're going. So it's no, it's no, uh, coincidence that they're going fast, they know they're going fast. And an average speed coming down my road is fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five miles an hour in front of my house, my kids are outside throwing the ball. And so I've had to move my stuff up, I've had to make a berm up closer to my house to protect my kids from the street, because you're right. That sign's not just a, a maybe you might wanna go that fast, that sign is non-existent out there. They don't listen to it, they don't watch it. Okay, now, you're asking why I say that, well, here's why I say that. He's gonna have to put signage on his, uh, he's gonna have to put signage there someplace, this is where you turn to go to, to his facility. Well, that sign's gonna have to be someplace out on four seven six, there's gonna have to be something there, so they know to turn there. Well, the more things that we put out there, the more things are taking our attention away from our driving. And, um, and so, as we have the motorcycle guys coming, now we... And, and so as we have the motorcycle guys coming, now we have the, and frankly, the veterans things, I'll give up my life to let them do that. I mean, that's something that they've earned. But I do have concern. And the second thing is, is the veterans deal out there, you're not going there to drink and have a party. That's not why we're going out there. We're going out there to bury somebody and show respect. And in fact, every time they drive by, I'll stand out there and salute. I've been to a wedding, and I went to my own. And I'm not quite sure I remember how I got home. And so it's, it's, and this is just the way weddings are. We go there, we drink, and most of us, we know we're supposed to get a ride home, but some of us aren't going to. Some of us are going to drive. And then with this road the way it is, they're going to be going through these, especially when it stays gravel, it's horrendously dangerous out there. Now, I've got my kids playing out there, and there's other kids playing out there, and there's other adults mowing their lawns out there, right next to the road, so we can keep our township looking nice. And so I'm not here to say yes or no right now. What I'm here to say is, I'm asking you not to make a decision today and do something that I wish that would have happened earlier. I didn't know about this till a couple days ago, when my neighbors called me. Here's what I wish would happen. I would wish that if they really want to put something in our neighborhood, which is your neighborhood now, because you bought the land, but you want to put something where we've established kind of a way of life, that you talk to us about it. Get us together, sit down, see if we can come up to an arrangement, because we might have stood up here and all, all said, hey, give this guy his stuff, quit wasting time. We can't do that, because frankly, we're all worried that if you let this one go, there's going to be a whole bunch of bowling balls following behind it, and we're just going to be a bunch of pins getting knocked over. So I would, I'm not saying vote yes or no right now. I'm saying the right thing to do is to get us together and talk, and maybe we'll come out still agreeing to disagree, but at least we've had the opportunity to speak about it before you guys make the first step of a dangerous hill, if, if it would go that route. So that's kind of my two cents worth. And the drinking things, you know, I mean, that's, that's just, that's, that's going to happen, but we, we've got to be able to control that. The sound was, was talked about, and the traffic. So the septic, not quite so worried about. When I rebuilt my house, I had a beautiful working septic, and they made me tear it out and put a bigger one in, because I had bedrooms. So that is true. But anyway, that's just kind of my idea. And I'm hoping that we can come to a solution that'll work for everybody. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on this item? Please go forward. State your name and address.
My name's Brad Phil. I live at 25985, 477th Avenue, right next to the property we're talking about here. I don't think we've clarified enough how much danger there is with the traffic he's proposing with a 400-person event center. There's, on Slip Up Creek Road alone, there's four spots where accidents have either happened already or will happen with a high amount of traffic, as well as 477th Avenue, right there at the curve that you've seen pictures of. In the wintertime, that's icy. It curves and goes downhill towards the north, and so the sun never hits it, and, and it never melts off. One day, I heard crash, bang, boom, and right off the curve come a car flying and landed in my driveway. Another person was hurt seriously, because there's a hill just before their housing addition, and he got T-boned. You put a lot of traffic on that Slip Up Creek Road, and there's a giant hill just before the stop sign at Jim's Weep, Weep Road. And so in icy conditions, and you've got 200 vehicles coming down that road, you're going to have a lot of accidents. So there's, and there's people, there's kids using that road, there's adults using it for exercise, as well as people that live in the area coming and going. So there's a big safety factor here that I don't think is being addressed. And when you add that much traffic to a one-two lane road like that, it's going to significantly affect our property values in a negative way. And that's a big concern for all of us, too.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to come forward, sir? Please state your name and address.
My name is Steve Bechtold. I live on 47614 Slip Up Creek Road, just probably half a mile to the west of the subject property. We moved out there in 1972. That was before the rural water came in. As part of the rural water installation, they sent out forms to everybody that wanted to sign up. And they said, are you going to have horses? Are you going to have cattle? How many residents in your home? And they sized the lines accordingly. So my question would be for Mr. Tyler Childress. Has he checked with the rural water system to see if there's enough water coming? Because the main line is over on, what is it, County 125, comes through our back property to service all the houses up there. What I would not like was to have no water pressure on the weekend of these events. If you've got 400 people out there, you've got a kitchen going, you've got dishwashing, so on and so forth. So if they have to increase the size of that line, and is there enough pressure and water going through that line to service this, would be my concern. And I don't know if they have to set up water tanks for fire, if there was a fire, if they have to have a reservoir, because I know the renter fire, they've got tank trucks, but if it's a 125-foot building going, there probably wouldn't be enough water for fire suppression. I guess I agree with a lot of the questions that have already been raised, and I feel the same way as those presenters. Any questions of me? Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak before I close the floor?
Two more.
Sure.
I'm sure there was another one also. I apologize. Okay, yep. As far as the water, we have already drilled a well in that section, so the primary use, we have 140 foot down, and the well has already been drilled down. So we'll be having landscaping and, you know, beautiful sprinkler system and that kind of stuff. But the primary source, at least in the commercial area, will be from well and that kind of stuff. So there shouldn't be any sort of extra take or extra draw, unproportionate, you know, that kind of stuff. So we've taken that precaution to make sure that we're, we're kind and nice and using the water from an alternative source inside there. So we're not taking care of that at all. But just to understand the water side.
I used to live two miles north, but I don't live there anymore. I retired out as a high, high school teacher from Brandon Valley, and I no longer live around here. But 31 years of living in this area, I can tell you a lot about this area. First of all, that bridge that got taken out, got taken out because the road and the bridge are at the same elevation. So the weak spot is your bridge. It's going to go every time. Down there, the bridge that is on his land, the reason that that one didn't get taken out is because the road, the bridge is much higher than the road. The road comes down and goes into his place, so when it floods, it goes over that road. And that road, his road right there, that low spot, I've seen, there's got to be at least 300 feet that stays flooded for a long time. So if anybody puts a house back in there, they may get caught back in there for, you know, could be five days. And if somebody is back there in one of those houses, and there's an emergency, and it's flooding, there is no way that you're going to get that person to safety. Absolutely not. Okay? As for putting the event center in there, why wreck a beautiful area with that? There's going to be a beautiful cemetery there. That event center is going to wreck the area. It's a beautiful area. It should stay agriculture. There should be deer out there. There shouldn't be horses out there, not as many horses that he has, where it's just milled down to nothing. And if you go out there and look, them horses are grazing on other people's land, okay? Because it's just ate down to nothing. So, you know, as for the horses, you know, two or three horses, fine. How many does he have out there? I don't know, 15? Way too many for the land. Okay? I'm not in favor of that. I'm really not in favor of the cemetery either, because it's a beautiful area, it should be stayed a nature area. Okay? Any questions for me? I mean, I've been out there, I lived out there for 31 years, I've seen a lot out there. And the more that people move into that area there, that's a beautiful, beautiful area out there. I don't want to even see any more houses out there. I don't want to see event centers or anything in that area. I'd like to see it just kept in a nature area. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm at 47636 Slip Up Creek. Just wanted to reiterate, I don't know if you heard that in the past, when the 35 mile an hour speed zone was mentioned, there was a pretty good chuckle that went, went up from these people. The traffic that comes from the, yeah, 35 is not even a suggestion for them. Thanks.
Zach Witt, 47606 Slip Up Creek Road. I just want to hit on the traffic again. Coming off that main road that you turn on to Slip Up Creek off, I've almost been taken out on my motorcycle, turning onto my road before, because someone tried to pass me, because no one cares about the speed limits. I've got a four-month-old daughter. If she's four and she gets hit by a car, I'm going to be madder than a hornet. Oh, I walk my dog down that road all the time. I drive my truck down the gravel portion all the time, and I stay on the way on the right when I'm coming up the hills every day, because people come ripping up that road, because no one gives a shit about the speed limits. You're going to have accidents. I feel like this whole thing's being forced on all of us. None of these people want to see it. And you'll probably say yes, go home, not care about any of us living out there. But I'm already pissed, and I don't, go ahead, pass it, whatever. But none of us want it.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the floor. I do want to note that any action taken on this rezoning item is a recommendation. And this will go to the Joint County Commission and City Council, and that takes place on Tuesday, January 22nd, at 5:00 PM. And that is held in the Carney County Town Hall at 235 West 10th Street. Misses, any comments?
Well, Madam Chair, let me say to everyone that's here that this area is not zoned museum. The city of Sioux Falls is growing incredibly fast, and sitting on this board and sitting on the county commission, we contend with the amazing growth that the city is having all the time. Don't be surprised if there's a McDonald's on the corner of Jim's Weep Road and, and whatever it is. The stuff is happening, and it's happening fast. It's, again, it's not zoned museum, and it's not going to stay the same. If you think it's going to stay the same, something's going to have to change. But at the same time, I do believe that there are some issues with this, this project. I, I'm a little concerned about the road out there and, and the setup going forward, especially where it turns to gravel and goes around that curve. My own feelings, I guess, is that we should look into it a little further. I'd like to find out when that road might get paved and when it might get re-engineered. Certainly, it's good to have the township here, but they're not going to pave it, and, you know, maybe the federal government is going to pave it, I don't know. Maybe the state is, but it's, it's definitely going, the traffic is, is a huge issue at this location with that, that curve and that hill. But again, things are going to change, and, you know, we might have a super eight right there someday.
Well, Jeff said it well. I don't have really anything to add. I appreciate everyone coming tonight, and we do listen to everything that you say. Sometimes decisions are very difficult, and we try and, and do our very best based on all the comments that we hear. And I think we need event centers. I really do. I think that there's a need for, for those types of facilities. But I, like Jeff would echo that, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the road.
Anyone on the city side?
Discussion on the city side?
Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, could we have Scott come back up to the mic here quick? Scott, so you mentioned, as you were talking through your report, that, you know, the land use and, of course, on the, on the city side, we're totally aware that use of the land is to be appropriate and zoned accordingly before you move forward with the other plans. And also, on the city, city side of things, and you're probably aware, we're spoiled in that there's a little section in our write-ups from the city staff that talks about water, sewer, police, traffic, fire. How does that trickle into something like this on the county side? And I apologize, I should know from my tenure, but...
Well, it's a, it's a little bit, it's, there's, well, there's a great difference between the city and the county, because the city has awesome facilities, a full-time fire department, a, a, a well-established water and sewer system. So you have access to all that. In the county, you do not. So you have to rely on volunteer fire departments with mutual aid agreements between various departments in the city. So that will address the fire, but there, there is no organ, there is, I can't go to a fire department and ask them to give me a professional report, like the city staff can go to the city fire department and do that. There has been a lot of discussion about the road tonight, and I will tell you that I have met with officials from the state in regard to that veteran cemetery. And they, we are all in agreement that something has to be done with that road. But it is not going to be Mapleton Township that has to step up to the plate to pave that road. And right now, we really have no one, there, there's been a lot of discussion about the cost of the cemetery and what it is going to cost to actually get that facility up and running. And I will tell you that the, the cost of paving that road has not been calculated into, into the cost of developing that cemetery. And in my opinion, and I've expressed that, I don't, I don't think they're going to want to have many funerals, and I know we're getting off topic here, but I don't think they're going to want to have many funerals where you may have 20 to 100 cars following in a row, and it's just going to be a huge dust, cloud dust. And so they're going to need to do something to do, to pave that road. And I think the, the state knows that, but finding the funding to do anything and having an entity take it over, whether that may be the county, it may end up being a, a county, county highway, but that, we've, the county highway superintendent's also been involved with these discussions, and of course, that road is not engineered to meet what we typically would accept for a county highway. So there's several hurdles that we are dealing with, and that really deals with that cemetery, not necessarily the event center. But it all goes into what I would say is the ultimate and eventual use of that road. Things are going to change, and, and they are projecting between 235 and 250 funerals a year. And I know this is, once again, off topic. They do not have funerals on Saturday or Sunday. So they are going to average more than one funeral a day going up and down that road. And however many people may be in that funeral procession, it may be, like I said, maybe it'll be five, maybe it'll be 100. But there's going to be a lot of traffic. And they are going to be going slower, because they typically, you know, are going slow. So that deals with, I think I discussed, water, the fire, water, it will be a septic tank, so that would be approved by the state. And it is policed by the sheriff, and you have heard comments from the public that... And it is policed by the sheriff, and you have heard comments from the public that, from the township supervisor, that they would like to have the sheriff patrol more of our county highways or township roads, but there are also, you know, thousands of miles of county highways and township roads to patrol. So is there a different, is there another, did I cover all of your questions?
Yes, sir. I just, my point with that was just trying to understand how this is going to get into after action is either approved or such. The plan escalates from there, and then you really go to work.
Yeah, and you...
Something to that effect was said.
You know...
So how does that, the comments, the public testimony you've heard, how would that influence?
You know, and it's certainly within your prerogative to continue this and require an engineering, a traffic study, and that would be on the applicant to produce. If you feel that there needs to be a detailed study on what that average daily traffic is, the slope, you know, that he would, it would be the responsibility of the petitioner to prepare some kind of document that would address your concerns. But if you do want to do that, you need to make sure you articulate to the applicant exactly what you'd like to see.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, the applicant has clearly made a huge effort to try to put this plan together, and, you know, and at the same time, I think that there are reasonable concerns being raised by the neighbors. And at the same time, it's not just the neighbors, because it's going to be anybody that goes there that has to take that road and, you know, I think if we did approve it, then it would still need to be, you know, exactly how the driveway would go. Would that driveway be paved? Would they have, would their septic be pumped, or would it have a drain field? All those kinds of things. Is that right, Scott?
Yeah, it would be in the final development plan.
So there's, even if it were approved tonight, there's still further steps. I think we should not make a decision tonight and try to cross more of the Ts and dot more of the Is, especially as regards to paving that road and re-engineering it, because the engineering, if you're going, taking a dive down a hill that never gets any sun in the winter, that's a scary thought to me.
So what are you suggesting?
Well, I'm looking at my fellow commissioners. Do you have a thought as to when we might want to relook at this?
Any comments, Mike?
I guess just thinking out loud here a little bit, knowing that we don't have a meeting in December, and while maybe it seems like a long time for the petitioner, give them that two-month window to maybe look at this a little bit further, have the meeting with your neighbors, as one of them suggested. Might be a good opportunity, too, to try a little bit of harmony. So I guess I would kind of concur with Mr. Barth that we should defer at this point. Yeah, a little bit more discussion, study. I don't know that I necessarily want to see a traffic plan, no. Because back to Scott's point, I think that there is more of a comprehensive issue here with the cemetery and other things going out there. That burden may be not lie solely on the petitioner, but I guess that's my thought.
Any other comments?
Yes. Growing up, I, my younger days, I did take that road a lot. I know how dangerous it can be. And just the growth of the area to the north, to the west, there's going to be a lot more traffic out in that area. So I think that's a big concern with me. You know, I know we don't have a meeting, I even think pushing it just to two months is kind of pushing a little bit, because this is a major, major concern, especially the road conditions and the future traffic out there. So I think we should delay at least three months.
I guess I was thinking delaying it till, like, summer, like, May or June, I guess, early summer, and kind of get a traffic. I guess I would talk to engineers, traffic engineers, and road engineers and see what they, their suggestions.
I'm comfortable just delaying or continuing. Would it be delay or continuance, Scott?
Continue it.
Continue it for two to three months.
Whatever date you pick.
How about city side? Any thoughts?
Sounds good.
Becky brought up great, I mean, basically, this road is going to get a lot busier, and stuff like this is going to pop up all over and around Sioux Falls, and, you know, it, the biggest thing that I see here is the road. And it's something where we want you to work with the neighbors, too, talk with them, rally people together. But the biggest thing what I've heard is, you know, a lot of people don't want it. But things like this are going to come into our areas that we don't want. The biggest concern is just the road here is my biggest issue. And I mean, basically, looking at two months, I mean, you don't want to miss May, June, you don't want to miss build time if it's going to be something that they want to get going right away. So rather delay it two months and see if they can get something figured out. Then, Madam Chair...
Any other comments?
Just to point a clarity, too, we would delay this for two months. If we come back in two months and it's not to a point where everyone's, or not that everyone's going to be harmonious, but we feel that the issues have been addressed, we can delay it for that time, correct? So rather than trying to put a restriction on the petitioner that we're not going to see it for six months, figure it out, I think that that two months is maybe a nice window. We can have a check-in if nothing else, if we need to delay it again, so it'll be it. But trying to be conscientious of their build time as well.
Jeff?
Madam Chair, Scott, if we were to continue it, waiting for you to call us and say we think we've made progress, I think you probably have a sense as to the concerns up here. If we were to continue it and not give a date certain, can't do that?
Yes, give a date.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'll, I'll make a motion to defer action until March. And I would also encourage everyone to talk to, to March 25. And I would encourage anyone to talk to Tyler about what might be done to make this a easier project to live with, you know, whether it's beyond paving, beyond anything we've considered. There probably are things that might be done that would make it easier to have as your neighbor. So if you can think of it, let Tyler know. And Tyler, listen to people and talk to them, have him over for coffee. But in the meantime, that's my motion, is to go to March 25.
I'm hearing some comments from the city side that that sounds like it's pushing it out quite a ways. So I know we need parallel motions among this group.
I'm willing to listen to what you think is right. I mean...
What I hear is two months. So go to the coming, what would be the January meeting, end of January.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion and wait for someone else to make a motion.
I will make a motion to defer till the January 20 meeting.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay, a motion is made and seconded on the county side to defer this to the January 28 meeting? Scott, sorry.
Before you vote, I just want to make sure that we are directing the applicant on exactly what you would like to see. So in your motion, I know it's typical that the city sometimes requires neighborhood meetings. Would you like him to have a neighborhood meeting before that? Because I don't want him to come back and have the neighbors all here say, there was no neighborhood meeting. So I'm just trying to avoid stumbling in January. So there's, if you wanted to have a neighborhood meeting, I think that would be something that you could decide with the motion, as well as, you know, exactly, is it just the traffic study that you'd like to see of the road, or is there some other issue as well? So...
Commissioners, any other comments? Do you want to put some conditions on that deferral?
I'd like to see a traffic study, I guess, on it. Biggest concern, I think, for everybody is the traffic on there, so...
Anything else?
No, sir. The floor is closed, sir. Any other comments that you would like besides the traffic study?
Madam Chair, I have a question for Scott. How long does a traffic study take if we were to require that?
I would assume that they could hire someone and have a traffic study done within two months.
Any other conditions you'd like to see?
I think on the city side, we'd like to see some neighborhood meetings. At least one suggests two or three would be wise.
Okay. In the future, is the state or the, you know, who's going to take care of that road? Is it going to come to, can we get some direction from where the state's going?
It's still a township road at this point, so it's not a county road, not a state highway, not a federal highway.
I'm guessing if they're going to put, they're going to put there, they're going to look into doing something somehow.
That's questionable, let alone how long it would take.
Right.
The process is usually very lengthy, depending upon if it's a state, or national, the feds, or whatever. Okay, I think that we've had a motion and a second to defer, but I think the conditions of that deferral tend to be that they would like to see, we would like to see a traffic study done, and we would like to have at least one, at least one neighborhood meeting with the petitioner and the neighbors. On the county side, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Entertaining motion on the city side.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to defer till the January 28 meeting to allow time for a traffic study and at least one neighborhood meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
One last comment, if I may. To all you neighbors in this area, there's a lot of passion around traffic, a lot of passion around what can happen, what you've almost seen happen. If something happened, I'm going to go beat the whatever out of somebody because of it. If you see something, call the sheriff. They can't fix what they don't know is broken. What did you see? When did you see it? Who did it? You know, drunken motorcycle fans out there, whatever it is, you got to call it in. Seems like you're tattling, but nothing's going to get fixed if you don't do something about it. So just my thoughts there. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion passes on the city side.
Thank you. We have no old business, no new business. I will intonate...
Madam Chair, just another point. As a county commissioner, we elect a new chair every January, and that person assigns the commissioner to be on this board. I may not be here, so good luck.
Good comment. You're in, please.
Seconded.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes on the county side.
Motion.
Seconded.
Seconded, we are adjourned. Thank you.